It's time to call the regular meeting of the Waverly City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here.
Drinkow.
Present.
Kangas. He's absent. Waltstein.
Here.
Raffi.
Here.
McKenzie. Absent. And Chair.
Present.
For the record, Tim Kangas has a meeting tonight. He thought he might be here about eight o'clock. And so we'll see what happens from there. Again, welcome to all of you that are in the audience. Welcome back. Katie Trager, our guest councilperson. And wasn't too hard on her the last time because she consented to come back. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any additions, corrections, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda is approved. Next item, approval of the minutes from February 26, 2018 study session. Entertain a motion?
I move approval of the February 26, 2018 study session meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is date, time, and place for a public hearing on the Slurry Seal Program 2018 project, plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. I'll entertain any comments from the public. If Carla did not receive any written or...
I did not, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak to that, this item? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Council discussion.
Just for my own education, so the estimated cost of this project is listed as $64,000. That estimated cost, that comes in after the bids and it's not based on the engineer's original estimate. Is that correct?
Mike, can you enlighten us on that?
The actual bid is $61,265.
Right.
Yeah.
So that $64,000 is based, that estimate is made after we get the bids and have identified the low bid. Is that correct?
Is that in like the resolution or the...
The resolution says $64,000.
Yes, so $64,000. So I assume it's the low bid plus a certain percentage.
It's the low, yes, it's the low bid plus a portion of the administration cost. So they're kind of coming up with the total project, estimated project cost.
I suppose, I see that the initial engineer's estimate is at $77,000.
Correct.
Plus. So I just want to make clear that $64,000 isn't based on the engineer's estimate, it's based on the bids we've received. It comes in after we've kind of identified the low bids.
Right, we were able to do that with the advantage of having the bids.
Right. Just understanding the process. Okay, thank you.
Into the mic, please. Mike. Next time you're called on to speak, if you would, please. Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion for Resolution 1841.
I move approval of Resolution 1841. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $64,000 for the Slurry Seal Program 2018 project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Motion carried. Five to zero, two absent. Public hearing number two, approving Resolution 1842, a resolution awarding contract for the Slurry Seal Program 2018 project. Entertain a motion.
I will move Resolution 1842, a resolution awarding contract for the Slurry Seal Program 2018 project to Foreigner Asphalt Sealers of Dubuque, Iowa for the bid amount of $61,265.95.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Motion approved, five to zero. Item number two. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the 2018 Batumina Seal Coat Program, project plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. Entertained, did you receive any comments on this one, Carla?
No, sir, I did not.
Thank you. Entertain any comments, questions from the audience. Open the public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion by the council.
I'll move Resolution 1843, a resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $187,000 for the 2018 Batumina Seal Coat Program.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I don't have any comment specifically on this resolution. However, I do want to point out to the council that one of the things that people look at when they are looking at a town to decide where to live is how well the properties and the streets are being maintained. And the city staff, the engineering staff, the city streets department has done a wonderful job on the streets here in Waverly. And the seal coat project, I think, has gone a long way toward extending the life of a lot of these streets. However, at some point, we are going to get to the point where simply seal coating is not going to be good enough for them. And I know that Mike has discussed very briefly in one of our, I think it was a budget session, about, you know, taking a look at formulating some plans on beginning to replace some of these streets. And as a resident of the Third Ward, most of these older streets that were probably constructed, you know, certainly in the early part of the 20th century, are beginning to have some problems that simply seal coating isn't going to fix. Now, I understand that we have no money to do anything for a while because we've spent most of the funds that we have on doing some of these projects. And it may be a number of years before we're going to be able to actually formulate a plan for doing this. But I think that it is important that we spend some planning time, certainly not tonight, and I'll try to cut this short as much as I can because we do all want to get home. But certainly one of our planning sessions that we talk about formulating a plan to start reconstructing some of these streets. And it's very important, I think, not only to the residents that live there, but to the future of Waverly, that we have a plan for reconstructing these streets and not simply patching and seal coating them. So I would make that comment, but I do stand in support of this resolution.
I think you have a good point that city staff, particularly the street department, needs to begin to look at a long-range plan to incorporate some of that. Any other comments?
I would second what Rod said. I think it makes good sense actually add my street to that, and I'm not in the Third Ward. But then McKenzie did make the point at a previous session that it would be wise at some point for us to figure out a way simply to start to designate funds for streets. And I think that's right. I have no idea where that's coming from, but I think lifting it up is a good idea.
Very good. Other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Motion carried, five to zero, two absent. Part two A, second part of this res, of this project is approving Resolution 1844, a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Batumina Seal Coat Program. Entertain a motion.
I'll move Resolution 1844, a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Batumina Seal Coat Program to Blocktop Services of Humboldt, Iowa for the bid amount of $184,069.
A second?
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion, comments?
So my only question is, looking down the agenda for regular business item number two, I see that this is the same company that we're going to be, we're scheduled to approve awarding the contract for citywide asphalt patching. And is there any concern that this company will have difficulty meeting both? Okay, I mean, it's just, I know you've got one bid, but kind of, they're not somehow independent of each other, so just want to make sure that that's aware of.
Very good. Any other? Roll call vote, please.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Motion carried, five, zero, two absent. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the intent to commence a public improvement project for the 20th Street Northwest Reconstruction Phase One Railroad Crossing Improvements Project and to acquire property and easements for said project. Any written or oral communications, Carla?
No, sir, Your Honor.
Okay. Open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience that cares to speak to this?
Mary French, 1902, Knight Avenue. I'm also the chairman of the residents' council for Eisenach Village and very happy to hear the discussion about the need for reconstructing some of the streets in Waverly. And I propose that you start on 20th Street first. I've lived off this street for three and a half years now, and it has gotten nothing but worse. We've got patches on top of patches on top of patches. The railroad crossing is dangerous. This last summer, we had one of our residents was hit by a train because the sightlines are almost nonexistent. And so we want to urge that you go ahead with Phase One, and we look forward to Phase Two.
Very good. Thank you, Mary. Anyone else cares to speak to this project? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 18-45, resolution to commence a public improvement project for the 20th Street Northwest Reconstruction Phase One A Railroad Crossing Improvements Project and to acquire property and easements for the project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
If I may make a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor. I want to make sure that I have communicated this properly to people and that I also understand this, but the project that we are approving tonight is basically the railroad crossing area, both on 20th Street and on Fifth Avenue. And the intention of the council is not to stop there. I would have preferred personally if we had done the 20th Street project all the way to the crossing at Fifth Avenue, so we could do it as one project. But I understand for scheduling purposes that that wasn't possible. But we certainly intend to continue the project so that the entire street from Fifth Avenue to the driveway at Eisenach Village will be completed certainly within the next year or two. That's my understanding and, you know, that we are simply not doing only the railroad, which is what we're voting on tonight. The intention is to continue rebuilding the entire street until it's done, so that people at Eisenach Village and other places on 20th Street will have a road that they can drive on without being afraid, excuse me for turning to talk to the audience, I hope that, keep forgetting the mic is over here, but that they'll have a road that they can drive on without being afraid of falling into the road ditch.
I thought it did go up to the, doesn't it go up to the entrance to the village?
Yeah, there is some partial roadway done with this one. It's not the full-blown project down to Fifth Street itself, but there is a portion of it on either side of the railroad that does go almost up to the driveway. So it is a significant chunk of it.
It's not going to be the entire 20th Street from Fifth Avenue to the driveway of Eisenach Village. It will be the part that's encompassing the railroad crossing this year.
That is correct. It's not the entire project, but it is a railroad plus some road on either side, and the northern part does go almost to the driveway. I mean, it's a good portion of it.
I just have a question about the email that we got today from a citizen. And I guess I don't remember, and I didn't have time to look it up, but does, can anybody remember, or maybe Carla knows off the top of her head, on the, I think it was the March 19th public hearing on this? Wasn't there a public hearing? Oh, no, March 19th is today. So, right, so we have, and the previous discussion, sorry about that, the previous discussions that we've had, has that, have those questions ever been brought up before? That we got in the email today?
The question is whether or not we need the extra 17 feet of right-of-way on the west side. And this is a minor arterial street. When we start a street like this and want to continue it in the future as a minor arterial, we intend to do 100-foot right-of-way on those because of the need for additional space within the right-of-way on both sides. So we wanted to start with that, and that's the way it was designed. It's also a road that's designed with different elevations, you know, on each side, and so there'll be some additional area to grade out and assimilate that with the next door property. I did, I tell the property owner who was here in the, here today, that we weren't going to put, there wasn't going to be any, any utilities put in the right-of-way right now, but that it was for future purposes of using that for right-of-way when it's used in the future. Because we're not going to do it right now, we did agree not to take the 17 freed, 17 feet in front of the two houses that she owns on, by Fifth Avenue, and they're also fairly close to the street in that location. But there's also a sewer line that goes in the front of those houses that goes down, but that's a sewer service for those two homes. So that would be what is the kind of example of what that right-of-way could be used in the future.
But again, I guess to ask, this is the first time this has been brought up, right? I mean, we'd never got this question before when we were discussing this project.
I don't think we got that to that point. I've had some discussions with Ms. Lee about that because I know she raised the question of whether we absolutely need it. And again, the answer is, we intend to do this as a minor arterial, and we usually try to acquire everything up front that we can do for that type of a right-of-way, rather than wait till a later date when we absolutely need it and have to really push to do it if we had a utility that wanted to be in the right-of-way. And I think it was also just the idea that it would be easier to grade down, and the upper, or the north end of her property is fairly low compared to the street, and so we want to grade that out and make a proper grade so it isn't such a steep area.
So then the 17 feet will start just north of those houses?
It will start right on the north property line of the north, the northernmost house, and then just go all the way up to the, where the property ends at the railroad tracks, or near the railroad tracks.
And have you had similar questions from any of the other property owners, which are mainly on the east? Barbara Ward, Bergen.
We have three property owners, and I already have agreements with them to purchase the right-of-way that we, actually, the east side is being given without compensation, and the west side, we offered the same compensation per square foot to both of the owners on that side.
Bill, you might want to share that mic that's sitting over there. Someplace, there should be an extra one. Oh, okay, didn't see it, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Waltstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Motion carried, five, zero, two absent. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation for Meals on Wheels. And I have that proclamation here. Proclamation proclaiming March 2018 as the 16th Annual March for Meals, Meals Month. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregant and home-delivered, and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas the 2018 Observance for March for Meals celebrates 16 years of providing an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels program administered by the Northeast Iowa Agency on Aging and the Waverly Senior Center distributing both congregant and home-delivered in Waverly, Iowa, have served our communities admirably for more than 44 years in the city of Waverly. And whereas volunteers for Northeast Iowa Agency on Aging Meals on Wheels programs in Waverly, Iowa are the backbone of the program when they need not deliver nutritious, or need not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Northeast Iowa Area Agent, Agency on Aging Meals on Wheels Programs in Waverly, Iowa provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the Waverly, Iowa area that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas Northeast Iowa Area on Agency on Aging Meals on Wheels Programs in Waverly, Iowa provide a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to combat loneliness and isolation. And whereas Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging Meals on Wheels Programs in Waverly, Iowa deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to local communities or state and our nation. Now, therefore, I, Dean Sois, as Mayor of Waverly, do hereby proclaim March 2018 as the 16th Annual March for Meals Month, and urge every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels program, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National 2018 March for Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. Dated this 19th day of March 2018, and I'm proud to say that I did my turn today. And they were very appreciative and of the program. And so I would entertain a motion to approve that proclamation.
So moved.
Second? Motion made and seconded. Voice vote, please. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Proclamation is delivered, five to zero, two absent. Next item is public comments for any items that is not on, that are not on the agenda. Vote to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Josh Voight. I am a student at Wadberg. I live at Wadberg 100, Wadberg Boulevard. I have been recently elected as the student body president, and one of the immediate items that has come to my, or come up to me has been a safety concern along the Fifth Street, or Fifth Avenue Northwest. Now, unfortunately, I had some printing issues before coming, so I don't have a copy of it for myself. But I sent Councilwoman Waltstein an email in PDF form outlining where that particular issue is. I'm not sure if you guys have seen that.
I sent it on to Carla finally today. You still didn't get it? I sent it twice, I thought. Okay, well, maybe we didn't get it. I'm sorry, Josh. As soon, that was the first thing I did last night, was send it on, but apparently there was not an attachment.
Okay.
Then I thought there was, and I sent it again today, but apparently something happened, didn't go right today either. Huh?
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Well, to explain, the issue is, we have, that street goes between the main campus and some of the accommodations that are just across the side of the road. Now, there's one crosswalk that goes between the Clinton Hall, which is the newly renovated hall, and a group of buildings known as the Manors, which obviously students use primarily to get across that road. However, there's another set of buildings that are only for senior students, which is a little bit further down the road, which doesn't have a crosswalk that goes across. So often, they are having to cross that road without having the safety of that crosswalk, which technically, I believe, is jaywalking. However, there is also a Ninth Street there that leads into one of the buildings, which if you look at the sidewalk across, near where the Knights Village is, there is actually a ramp that leads you onto that road. So I would like to request if it would be possible if we could have a crosswalk put in from where that sidewalk is, just across to the other side of campus. That would serve students the opportunity to cross the road safely, not only to get to their accommodations, but also to get to this parking space known as N Lot, which is, which is one of the primary parking spaces on campus, and quite a lot of students have their vehicles parked inside of there. So it's a very small request, not something too major. It's just a matter of keeping the students safe when having to cross that road.
Josh, I'll make sure that somehow Carla and I figure out what happened to that, and I'll say, I know I have it, so I'll just send it to her again.
Okay.
Otherwise, I was going to say, if he wants to send it, write to me.
Yeah, do you have a email?
Can I make reference to what you have pulled up? Can I approach?
Sure.
Yeah, so it's basically this you can see here. There's that crosswalk there. This one here leads to there without that. So these students that live in all of these accommodations here don't have a legal safe way to cross the road, neither do all of these students that use this parking space. So I'm not sure if there's any limitations as to whether we can do that. But if you, if we could take that into consideration, that would be great.
Very good. Thank you. Sounds like it's a matter of getting out the paint can and designating a crosswalk in another location. Very good. Thank you, Josh.
I don't know what the procedures are on this, Mr. Mayor, but I think that, you know, maybe we need to look at doing something more than just painting some lines on the road, because there is a lot of students, there is a lot of student activity going back and forth across that street. It's a very heavily traveled street. I've always been someone who's been very in favor of having pedestrian safety lights, so the traffic actually has to stop for pedestrians. That may not be something that we can do there because there's such a huge volume of pedestrians crossing the street. But I don't know if this is the Police Department or the Engineering Department, who takes a look at that, but I would certainly appreciate it if they made some recommendations and came back to the council. I'd hate to see one of the students at Wadberg getting hit by a car.
Good point.
I would agree with that. Even the first crosswalk that's there is very dark at night and pretty poorly lit.
I mean, I'll just say, I've, and Rich knows this, I've said it before, but I, you know, I think there's just a general cultural problem in Waverly, not just at Wadberg, in terms of driving habits and people not stopping for pedestrians at crosswalks. And I think, and that's all over town. I experience it all the time, and I hear it from citizens, too. But I think, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe there's a different carrot to put out there, but in my view, it's the stick of a ticket that will start getting people's attention when they don't stop for pedestrians, when they're stepping into the crosswalk, but...
Especially bad by the courthouse. That's terrible. You see people stand there forever trying to have somebody stop and let them go across.
And I try to step out. I mean, you know, but sometimes I feel like I'm taking my life in my hands, you know.
I would add that as soon as the threat of snow is gone, we do place the yield to pedestrians out at strategic locations, and the one at Fifth Avenue is a location where we've done that, so...
I appreciate that, Mike, but I, you know, people get used to it and, you know, still don't pay attention to it, yeah.
Culturally, I think Waverly is getting a little bit better, and I think the signs are... are helpful in reminding. And, you know, maybe we get a little lax over the winter, but we'll be looking at getting them out probably next week, because there is a chance of snow this weekend.
Any other discussion on the crosswalks? Anybody else have comments for any item not on the agenda? Seeing none. Next item, consent calendar. The following items will be acted on in unison with one vote. Approve the purchase of a 2018 Freightliner 108 SD cabin chassis from Don's Truck Sales of Fairbank, Iowa for the net delivered price of $57,190, which includes a trade-in of a 2005 Sterling dump truck for $22,000. And approve the purchase of the hook, lift, and accessories from Don's Truck Sales of Fairbank, Iowa for the installed delivered price of $77,960. Cash disbursements for February 2018. Class B native wine permit for the Wild Carrot LLC. Class C beer permit for Quick Star 707. Class E liquor license for liquor and tobacco outlet. Class C liquor license for El Sol Mexican Restaurant Incorporated. And a class C liquor license for Waverly Country Club.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, if possible, I never know what the timing of when you're supposed to do this, but I'd like to pull the first one out, just because I have a question.
Okay, that's fine. Motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number one.
I will move approval of the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded for items two through seven in the consent calendar.
I think you needed a second to pull that out.
Do you need a second?
I thought it said.
Any councilman can pull something off the consent calendar.
Yeah.
I almost didn't say anything.
Any other discussion on items two through seven? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Items two through seven, carried five to zero. Now, Edie, would you?
Yeah, I just have a question. I'm not, you know, opposed to it or anything, but as I understand it, there's no discussion on the consent calendar at all, so I just wanted to pull it out, so I could ask the question about the stellar bid that was withdrawn. And it was quite a bit lower than the others, because it said there was inadequate information or something like that. Could you just comment on that, Mike, or what that's about?
The bid was incomplete, and it was withdrawn. They effectively forgot to add in the value of the hydraulics that were needing to be part of the bid package. And so they basically said they can't honor it.
Oh.
And the bid is withdrawn.
Had it happened prior to the deadline, we would have honored it, but since it happened afterwards, they'd been open, it was made public. It really was not morally right to let them add more on to it, even though it'd still be low bid. And so we gave them the option of honoring the amount they'd bid, all-inclusive or pulling it, and they determined they'd rather pull it. And so we went to the second highest bid.
And do we know whether their all-inclusive would have been less than the one that we accepted?
It's irrelevant.
Okay.
Because it can't, it would taint the bid process if we were to allow them to come back and, oh gee, I forgot to add this on there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think you can talk about it was a public email. It would have still been less, but the problem is, if they knew that it was a certain gap and wanted to add more on, I'm not saying they were doing this, then that's not really fair to the others, in a sense. So they really had to honor what they bid by the deadline and not allow them to add more on after still getting the low bid, but increasing their bid itself. So in all properness, this was the way to do it. We gave them the option, and they determined it'd be best, they pulled it, and so we went to the second.
Thanks.
Usually, or often, when we make these purchases, there's a trade-in involved. I didn't see any reference here. Is that involved this time? Did I miss it?
Yep. It was part of the materials we got, I thought.
Oh, okay.
On the first page.
It was.
$22,000.
On the first.
Dump truck. It was $22,000, and the Sterling A133 was $30,000.
And it just magically appeared on my first page. Thank you.
That's okay. This public hearing magically appeared for me today, so.
Any other discussion on item number one? Hearing none, now to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the 2018 Freightliner.
Let's all move.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the purchase of 2018 Freightliner and the hook, lift, and accessories from Don's Truck Sales of Fairbanks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried five, zero, two absent. Regular business item number one. Resolution approving Resolution 1846, a resolution approving contract with Modern Builders Incorporated for the removal of the canopy in the 200 block of East Bremer Avenue. Entertained a motion.
I'll move Resolution 1846, a resolution approving the contract with Modern Builders Incorporated of Janesville, Iowa for the removal of the canopy in the 200 block of East Bremer Avenue for the Bremer Avenue Water and Sewer Main Replacement Project for the sum of $18,260 and an additional not to exceed $3,000 for additional repairs.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion?
Bill, can you, or someone, bring us up to date on, there's obviously some pushback on this. Does the concern that's been raised, in your opinion, have some merit?
Well, this is a situation that kind of got thrust upon us unexpectedly a month ago, well, actually, about three weeks ago. And we were discussing last year what we might do to improve the canopy during the project, and no one brought up the idea that maybe that couldn't stay there during the project. And so we started looking at what had been done last year during the project and what was going to be done this year, and thought it doesn't make any sense that they could leave it there, given the number of, or how much ground was taken up and how deep they went on both sides, up to the four foot against the building. So we basically put it to the DOT, you know, what are we going to do with this canopy? Because we want to know for sure, this is, you know, this is three or four weeks before we're starting construction. And at that point, everyone, I mean, the engineers, the DOT, basically said, well, I don't see how we can keep it. It'd been nice to know that last year. Would've been nice to be able to talk with owners, to have more time to be discussing what would happen and how it could happen. But it makes sense that it can't stay, because it's basically resting on posts that are about four foot away from the curb. Most of that is going to be 10, 12 foot deep when they get into it to put in the storm sewer and the drainage and the water lines. The first thing they told us to do is to basically tell the owners they have to remove the canopy, which didn't really seem very fair at all. And so we moved quickly towards discussing how we could help that process and what it might cost. We were a little concerned, because we didn't know what it would take to remove the canopy. And I know there were property owners that had concerns about the cost and about what to do after it had been removed. So what I did is, you know, they said they were going to try to get some estimates, and after a week, I hadn't seen anything. And so I did my own reconnaissance and found a firm that could actually give us a look at it. I think after that, some of the other owners did provide some others that had given some feedback on removing the canopy. But it sounds like it's a little more, it's a little easier than we thought to remove it, because it's actually setting on a piece of metal that's curved, so that's like setting on the top of that, but that metal is drilled into the buildings all the way up and down along there. So it basically is sitting on top and then bolted into that top part of the L, the upside-down L. So they indicated that they could get it off fairly straightforwardly, because they could lift it off and take it apart as they were lifting it off. They could use scissors lifts, they could do that and cut it up and basically remove it, hopefully without doing anything to the buildings, except for that metal strip that would stay on there. And that's probably the more problematic piece. But the canopy can come off, and that piece doesn't necessarily have to come off, we don't think, just to get the canopy off in order to do the work. What's going to happen when it gets open, we're not sure, because we don't know what it's going to look like. It's 1965 vintage. It appears as though it'll be, you know, they'll be able to take it off within two or three days. We don't know what's going to happen when they get it off. We know that the contractor indicated the willingness to put a Visqueen type of thing to fill in any holes or gaps or cracks or anything of that nature in the buildings, because we don't know what's behind them. And that was how we presented it at first. And then one of the other people that had looked at it said, well, we should be able to take some sheet metal and probably color-match it somewhat. They probably have to be almost like a highlight strip, because you probably couldn't match the actual colors. But they could cover it and seal it for now, until the building owners can figure out what they're going to do to replace that particular canopy. And several of them have indicated a willingness and an interest in doing individual-style canopies, something that would match their own decor, that they could put together for themselves. So we kind of looked at the cost that people thought it would take to do that much, to basically seal it with sheet metal, try to do some standard color sheet metal that's available, so that they can match it somewhat to what's there, so that maybe for this season, they don't have to do anything, and they can wait until the project's done and then go back in there and do it. One thing we know is that, once it's taken off, within a couple of weeks, it's going to be torn up, and they're going to dig it up, and nobody's going to be able to work on the front of the building for quite a while. And so our biggest concern was to make sure that they weren't put at any risk with the buildings, that they could be sealed and they could be protected in the meantime. And then decisions could be made by the individual business owners as to what they do next with their buildings. So it was basically intended on our part to say, we know what kind of position they're in, this is necessary for, especially for our portion of the project, which is storm sewers and water mains and water services and sidewalk replacement. And clearly, it has to be done for that purpose. So we felt it was appropriate, given that that's a pretty unique situation. We've done a few things where people's things are somewhat in the right of way, and we've taken out a flagpole, and we've helped with a sign, but more minor than this. And this is, and given that it's $18,000 or it's $21,000 for six or seven business owners, it's not that major per building, but we think this is our way to help and provide assistance. And to make sure it gets done by next week, because they're going to start next Tuesday, when the barricades are up and when the street's blocked, and then we can assess what it looks like when it gets off. I'm not sure, you know, I don't know where the legal obligations are, and frankly, I've haven't looked at all the cases, and I haven't read everything with the argument that, you know, maybe we don't have the permission unless we have permission from everybody. I don't know that. DOT thinks that we can take off anything in the right of way and remove it. We don't want to be that brazen. I mean, we want to make sure we're working with the owners as best as we can. We've got everybody, but one, basically agreeing with our plan of action here. And so we've got to address the concerns that every one of them have, and the person that, and the owners that do have concerns. But again, we didn't come to you with the idea that we could have an open checkbook for whatever needs to be done on those buildings, because at some point, we have to determine what, if anything, needs to be done for stability or for structural. What needs to be done for aesthetics? What that's going to take? You know, what stainer do we get to? You know, how much do we do? I'm not unwilling to have that discussion, but frankly, we need to get the thing off next week, or we delay the project somewhat. I know they won't get to it probably for three or four weeks on that side, because they're starting on the south side. But that's the best time to do it, when the traffic control is in place and they don't have anybody on that side. So I'm, I mean, I'm not trying to make legal judgments about what we can and can't do at this point, because I don't know for sure. I'm being told different things from different people, and it's a struggle for us, too, to decide how we try to move forward on this.
So, James, this would not be, would not have been originally budgeted for? Where would the funds come from if the city does this?
Well, this is a multi-year project, and we will be billed at the end of this project in three equal payments, and we have estimates of what that's going to be. You're talking close to $5 million. You know, the $20,000 we're talking, we can certainly incorporate that in. We also have a street scape project after this, that we have to put some funding into for trees and planters and beautification. Hopefully, we get a grant program for the awnings, et cetera. So it's a moving target, it's kind of a fluid project, so we will be able to find the funding for what we're presenting to you today in light of the entire project cost. And again, we will be billed in three payments once this is completed. We have a decent estimate what the water main is going to be. That's where the first payment we're going to make in the spring is going to consist of, is just the water main itself. And then the final two will be broken up, depending on what the end project is, from a DOT and our share of it. So we can accomplish this if you choose to do so.
I guess I would like to hear from either Matt or Mark, just what their concerns are with this. As I was looking over this material, and it's the first time that I've seen it when I sat down here tonight, but as I see this, your concern is that the damages to your building might be larger than $3,000? I take it you don't really have a concern about taking the canopy off? It's the amount of damages that might incur to your building?
Yeah, that's fair. Mark Rollinger is my name, and I'm here on behalf of Matt Polistrini. Matt is the owner of 201 East Bremer Avenue. And I have had some correspondence with Mr. Werger and expressed my concerns. I would tell you that I think that the property owners do have the right to either say thumbs up or thumbs down to whether that comes off. And I cited the cases which I think support that, and I won't bore you with all the legal details, other than to tell you that in situations where the city has authorized improvements to take place in a right-of-way, they can be stopped from then forcing those improvements to be removed. In this case, it's not so much the removal of the canopy as the risk, backside risk, of what they might have to deal with if it doesn't go as planned. I think every one of you have been part of probably projects for the city, where there's unanticipated complications that arise out of a building project. And the problem that Matt Polistrini and I have with the resolution that's in front of you tonight, is that it says, we'll pay to have it removed, and then we'll authorize up to $3,000 to fix anything that needs to be fixed afterwards. Well, you have pictures in your packet that shows the length of this canopy. It's five or six buildings that are implicated by this. We're talking about allocating, I mean, realistically, $500 or $600 per property to clean up this canopy that has been there for, I think, close to 60 years, 50 or 60 years. We have a concern that when you take that thing off, there could be structural issues. They may arise. They may not. $3,000 may be appropriate, and if that's the case, then the city's fine. Our contention is, is that the risk of it being more shouldn't be foisted on the back of the property owner, not knowing, having any idea what's going to happen on the backside of this thing. And I proposed language to Mr. Werger that just replaced the cap of $3,000 in an email today. I proposed language to him that, I won't read it, but it basically says, we'll take care of anything that needs to be fixed afterward. If it's only the $3,000 that Modern Builders or other contractors think is fine, then great. But if it's more than that, the problem is, is once the horse is out of the barn, the property owner doesn't really have any recourse. We believe that we do have the right to consent to the removal, and once we consent to the removal, and there's a resolution that says, we'll pay to have it removed, and we'll pay $3,000 to fix whatever's wrong, what's our recourse if there's a $10,000 problem at our building? I'm not sure the property owner has one. And my request to the council is, is that your resolution be amended to adopt the language that I proposed in the email to Mr. Werger, which essentially says that you would cover not only the cost of removal, but the cost of anything arising out of the removal that needs to be fixed. To Mr. Werger's point, this was all put upon your backs a month ago, it sounds like. Well, it was put on the backs of the property owners a week later. They don't have any idea what this is going to look like, or the implications for their old building. for their old buildings. We're talking about in Matt's case, an old brick structure. I'm concerned about what happens when you tear that thing off. Bill tells us that it's sitting on a, on a, on a, on a structure that should make it easy to tear off, but Bill's not going to guarantee that for you and neither is modern builders. And so we have the same kinds of concerns that anybody has when you're tearing into some, the face of someone's building. And we, if the city's going to do this, we think that you need our consent and we're here to tell you, we'll give it to you if you take care of any problems that arise out of it. I don't think that's an unfair request. Do you have any other questions?
I do. I, I think, and I can't find it now real quickly, but because we just got this today, I think, oh, here it is. I think you also referenced not just structural damage, but aesthetic.
Yes.
And I mean, that's very difficult to define.
Well, I think, I agree, but it's, I would, I would agree with you completely, but you know, there would be, there would be a reasonableness component to anything. I mean, I don't think that if a dispute rose between a property owner and city hall about having to put gold, whatever they put on the Capitol in Des Moines across there, nobody's going to do that. But there could, there could be reasonable differences based on, that's one of our concerns, quite honestly. Should that subjectivity be left entirely to the city without, without any check or balance? We would say no.
But what about just limiting it to structural? I mean, you know, aesthetically, maybe I'm going out on a limb here, but what we have right now isn't exactly beautiful.
Well, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. I mean, I, I think that Matt would rather have what he has right now than the scar left from what might be there when it's all taken off.
Well, my point in this is just that aesthetics are debatable.
And my, my response is, is that that can be resolved if that, if that, if that happens. What can't be resolved is a $10,000 or a $20,000 or a $50,000 issue when we have a resolution that caps it at three. It just doesn't work. It doesn't work for Matt and it shouldn't work for the rest of the property owners. But I, I'd mentioned to Mr. Wurger that, that our contention is if you need to take it off, we understand. Matt will provide the consent if the city takes responsibility for fixing anything that needs to be fixed afterward without a cap on it. And if you're right about the cost, then that's good for everybody.
Who owns the canopy?
The, the property owners.
Like they own their footage that, to the end of their building?
They have an agreement that basically the canopy is a commonly owned among the property owners, the way they, the way their agreement runs.
And who owns the sidewalk?
The, the city sidewalk is in the right of way. It was given to, it was dedicated to the city back when it was platted. And at some point, the DOT is saying, we designated this as Highway 3. So somehow we either gave it to them or they just took it from us or they just think they own it. It's kind of one of those.
City thinks they own it?
No, no, the DOT thinks they control it.
The DOT thinks they own it?
Yeah. But it, you know, it's, it's a control that's worked with the city.
Yeah.
And I don't think they would make us take this down i- if it weren't for this project. I mean, there was discussion about repairing it. And, and the only way to, to take it off, you really can't put it back the way it's constructed. I mean, everybody that's looked at it agrees that it just can't be, it's going to have to be cut up to be taken off because it was built in place.
And we're, and we're not here to tell you that you can't take it off. We're here to tell you that you can't take it off unless you make arrangements to take care of any problems arising out of it. That's all. I mean.
Well, depending on our budget, that might be saying we can't take it off.
Right.
That, that's a decision you have to make.
Right.
As the, probably the only member in this room that was here when that canopy was put up, I would equate what's on the building, as Bill refers to it, an L-channel. As he equate that to a ledger board if you're going to build a deck at home. And I personally would not see other than some possible weathering, although I don't know that there's been any leakage between the building's face and the canopy itself. So it shouldn't be any more than normal weathering of the brick and, and which most of that is. I'm not sure, do you have a dollar amount that?
No, and my, I, I actually I don't and I don't think there should be a dollar amount. I mean, I think the city can take some comfort in the fact that it is, as you described. But if someone came to your property and said, you know, just trust us and take a chance that there's no problem here. I mean, look, you're right about the, but what if over the course of, of 50 or 60 years and five or six properties to suggest that some of the things that are fastening that aren't just going to easily come undone and that they might end up pulling away pieces of the, that's just, it's naive to think that if you go the length of that block, that you aren't going to have potential problems that aren't going to be covered by $3,000. To ask the property owners to agree to have it taken off with a cap on fixing those problems, to me, is just not fair to the property owners.
Well, I just don't feel comfortable writing a blank check on the city's balance. I feel a whole lot more comfortable if we were to be open to revisiting any, if it turns out that any costs exceed the $3,000 amount, the city council could certainly revisit that situation and pay for repairs as are needed. But again, with Edie's comment regarding aesthetics, I'm really concerned about writing a blank check and getting into a long, drawn-out argument over, you know, how pretty we need to make it to clean up, you know, the canopy being removed. I think $3,000 should cover it. It's a reasonable amount. And I just don't feel comfortable just kind of writing a blank check to, you know, do whatever people, other people think needs to be done to repair it.
We won't consent to the removal of the canopy if, if there's a $3,000 cap. And we just will not.
So then what are our options?
Go back to the DOT. I know the DOT indicated, well, if they, if you don't do it and they don't do it, we'll do it. And I don't know if that means that they would just come in and do it or they would authorize the, they believe they can do, require removals of things within the right of way. And I think the initial position was that they can require the building owner that, that put that in the right of way to remove it. And if they don't, they can remove it. You know, obviously we're not trying to take that strong a position because we, we want to get this project done and we cannot do the project with the canopy in place. And that's a, that's a piece of a puzzle that if it's not there, the other part doesn't work because you don't get the storm sewers replaced and, you know, get the main replaced and those kind of things. So we have to resolve this issue. The 3,000 was just intended to be sheet metal coverage. I wasn't trying to be, say that, that there wouldn't be things that have, that were exposed when the canopy comes off that maybe weren't caused by removing the canopy, but just are exposed because right now they're hidden. That was one of our concerns with when you take it off, what, how much is, are we responsible for if we're really just removing the canopy itself? And if canopy being removed doesn't cause the problems, the problems are behind the canopy. I, I don't know that there isn't additional money that could be done to help some of this situation. I mean, we were told that we shouldn't have to pay for it anyway, but I don't, I think we feel we want to pay for it. I mean, I think that's the right thing to do.
And from the property owner's perspective, we'd be, we would be more comfortable with either the city or the DOT forcibly removing it under a letter from us that says, you're just going to have to fix whatever damage there is than consenting to the removal in response to a resolution that caps the repairs at $3,000. I mean, if, if the DOT wants to just come in and tear it off, then we'd give a letter jointly addressed to the DOT and the city that says, okay, you can do that, but you don't have the right to do that. And if there's damages arising out of it, we're going to seek recovery for them. And there's the open checkbook, really. I mean, I don't think you get away from the open checkbook. It, it really depends on whether it can be taken off without doing damage to the building. And if it can't be taken off without doing damage to the building, should that be borne by the property owners? I don't, I don't think it should be.
I, I personally don't have a problem having the city pay for the removal of the canopy and paying for any damage it's actually done to the buildings as a result of the removal of the canopy. I have a small problem, but not an overwhelming problem with repairing damage to the buildings that is a result of the canopy being in place for a long number of years, such as holes in the brick or, you know, whatever else might be there. But I, I would support fixing that. My problem, my hesitancy, and I think the hesitancy of a lot of the people on the council are paying for things that we feel might be purely cosmetic to, to cover up the L-channel where the, the canopy is. And I, I would be very hesitant to say we're going to pay for any kind of things to do as, as your, as your proposal says, anything exposed by the removal of the canopy to blend in with adjacent areas unless that was more closely defined. If that could be defined as just putting the, the, the metal channel on it, I, I wouldn't have a problem with that because I don't think that would be all that expensive. But saying that any kind of cosmetic work that the owner wants to have on the building, the city's going to be responsible for, I have a problem with that. So I think if we can define the terms a little better, I don't think anyone's in, in disagreement with you, Mark.
No, I know. And, and, but, but the bottom line is, is that what we're confronted with is a, is a DOT that's saying it's got to be done next week and a city that because the DOT is saying it's got to be done next week. Realistically, if this, if, if there were six months, you probably could have come up with a design that might be acceptable to the property owners and I wouldn't be here. But this whole thing came up in three weeks and they were initially told, you just got to take it off and deal with it. And, and so, you know, that, that in and of itself raised hackles a little bit. We've made a lot of progress, we think. And, and Bill's worked well with me and I, and I've been happy with how this has gone so far. I just, we have, our only disconnect is you don't want to be on the hook with a blank check for some aesthetic issues and we don't want to be on the hook for aesthetic issues that we don't even know what they might look like yet or have any idea what a resolution might look like. And if we're forced, if we're forced to make a decision here tonight and, and to accommodate the DOT without getting a plan for how that, that bar might be covered in a way that's acceptable, then our contention, we have no, I don't think Matt has any choice. I wouldn't advise him to anything otherwise than to say, hey, you're removing it under protest and we reserve the right to bring a claim for damages to the building, including, including aesthetic damages. And, and my only concern is, is that it, I think that the city has rightly sought the approval and the consent of the property owners. But what I'm telling you is we're not prepared to give it if the deal is we'll pay to take it off and we'll allow $3,000 for, to, to, to repair it.
What about, I mean, what about a, a resolution that would be amended to, I mean, basically keep it as it is, but have something additional to it that if, if in fact the structural damages exceed that cap, that, that, that we'll come back here to review that?
Can I address something first?
Sure.
Because I think we're getting off the, we're, we're approving a contract with modern builders. And I'm not saying that other work can't be done when we find out what's open. I'm not holding them to the fact that that's the only thing we'll ever do. Because we, we have, we have to limit modern builders' exposure to what they're going to be required to do when they take it off. Now, if they take it off and, and we see some things that they reasonably tell us, hey, I think you should do more on this spot because this is the problem that was caused. I'm not telling them that, oh no, you're done because I already, we already agreed to accept what we offered you. I don't think we ever put it that way. This, this particular deal is what modern builders is going to charge us to work next week. If there's something left that they say, I think we want you to do something else and we think we have the right to, to demand that you do it, we may look at it and go, I think we agree or we don't agree, whatever, but.
And essentially, that's really not that much of a problem. What, what I want to make clear and avoid is that by, by appearing and approving your, your resolution or consenting to the removal, that my client property owner is waiving any right to see what, what this whole thing looks like after the fact. I, I just don't want to have to make, take a position before we've even taken it off to speculate as to what may or may not be this case once it is off. And if, if, if you want our approval, if we want to say, hey, it's okay to approve the modern builders bid to take it off with the understanding that we'll deal with whatever has to be done after the fact and you're not waiving anything, I think we're okay with that. We just don't want the city telling us after the fact, look, we made our decision at that council meeting on March 19th and we're not going to talk about what has to be done to your building now. If we could proceed with the understanding that we'll take, take a fair look at what has to be done to that building after that canopy's taken off, I, I think that we can live with that.
And I'll tell you, on this project, on this project.
I would not be in favor of anything that it's aesthetic because I think taking it off, the buildings are going to look totally different. And so how do you, how do you compare?
I said structural in my, my suggestion.
Yeah, I think mine, I would be fine with structural.
Keep in mind on this project, when we've done things with different owners, whether, whether we've had damages to buildings or things that have been taken off, we've worked here and there to do things differently and to make, make sure we make repairs. And I think that's what we're saying here. I, I never intended this to be, you have to take this, consent to this and you can never make a claim because we have, we have a number of claims that are made as to how things have been done on a project. And we sometimes have to resolve those by doing something different or adding something or doing whatever we have to do. So I wasn't intending to say, this is it, don't come back to us. I mean, if they can make a good case to us that, that we should help with something, I think that's something you should consider.
Well, and with regards to the aesthetics question is, there is a later part of this phase, the streetscape part, which is the opportunity to improve the aesthetics and appearance of this whole area. And this could certainly be included in that streetscape process.
Right. And I think what we talked about was if any building owner during, before we get that program going, we talked about whether we could do a kind of a retroactive, let them have an application for that prior program. So if they do some work ahead of time before we start the program, that we could grandfather that in if we do some kind of a match. So if they want to work on their buildings now and put up something that will qualify, that would qualify later for a match from the city, if we do that kind of a program and we, we want to try to do that, I think that they're uniquely in that situation because they may want to do it now and not wait till next year until we have the program ready to go. So if they spent $10,000 and we agreed to match everybody who put $5,000 into it, then we could retroactively say they qualify for that and we'll give them the match. I mean, that's kind of what we thought about doing. Again, these are things that we haven't set the rules on yet, but I think with this situation, we could probably do that. And I don't know what that match is going to be. You know, it depends on how much money we have and how many people we wanted to help with it. So I, I'm, we're willing to look at those things. And again, I'm not so concerned about, I, I know modern builders has to be very careful because their, their job is take this off without structurally damaging things. If they mess up and something goes through a window, we're not paying for it. They're probably paying for it because they didn't protect the window well enough. But if something's behind the, the canopy that they didn't really sign up for, they can take the canopy off, fine, but it just exposes an issue, then the question's going to be, is it our issue or is it the building owner's issue? And that can be an open question that can be resolved at that time.
Because I suppose their insurance policy only covers if it's gross negligence.
If they're, if they're negligent in not protecting what they're doing with their work. Right, right. And that's what they're going to be protecting against, that their actions in removing, they have to remove it in a workmanlike manner. If they don't and break something or ruin something, then they're responsible for that work. And that's, I think that's what they were trying to limit that we'll take it that apart carefully and take it away carefully and not damage any more than that. But they're not, they just want to cover up what is exposed. And that's why this contract is just, that 3,000 is really to put that sheet metal over those spaces to protect them for now, not a permit.
And that may be adequate. It, it may be adequate. It's just unclear at that, at this point. And that's what makes my client and me nervous. You know, I, I went to one of my law partners before I came up here, former city attorney for Cedar Falls and said, hey, should I be nervous about this? He said, absolutely you should. You've, you've got to make it clear that, that this is, especially when, what, what we believe the law is pretty clear that these property owners do have a right to consent. And so I'm worried about the impact of saying, okay, come on in, you can take the, you can take the canopy down. And then the impact of having to deal with what that, the fallout of that might be. I, I just want to make it clear that you can do, you have, you've got to do what you have to do tonight. But our position is, is if, if our recourse is capped at 3,000, you don't have our consent. If you're, if you're, if your position is, we, we want to take it off and we won't hold you to anything, we'll talk about it, we'll talk about what has to be done to the building after it's taken, after the canopy's taken off, we can live with that.
Typically, I would not get involved in this discussion very deeply. I think there's some things that could be, that would happen, that I'd like to see happen. I'm not sure that the $3,000 even is, at this point in the game, is even needed in there. there. Think the proper action is to get the canopy removed, and then revisit what's the face of the buildings afterwards. And I think the council would agree to that.
And that would be acceptable to us.
Because if you think about it far enough, that quote, "leisure board" may be a part of new canopies. And you don't even want to take it off. At this point in time, I wouldn't even recommend doing that, leave it in place, and then see what it looks like after the rest of the canopy's gone. So that's...
And that's our intent.
I think that's, I think that's where we're trying to go.
Because we really want to see, because we don't think people are going to want a strip of sheet metal to cover up, and that's the only thing that they're left with. I mean, we know that's not the case. But we also know that the thing's going to be torn up for five months, and they're not going to get to it. They're not going to be able to get to it. So we have to protect it for that five or six months that they can't get to it. And then we're going to be in the fall, so it's really, we're probably talking about a full year.
Swearing.
Yeah. And that's where we want to get to with our protection aspect of this. And again, it was supposed to be $3,000 because that would put sheet metal across that whole strip. That's kind of what their intent was. We're not trying to do more than that, seal it and put sheet metal over top of it until, because each one of them are going to have different ideas, different materials, different things that they do.
Well, and that may make some sense from just a weather, if indeed we are talking about a year, and we probably are, then that interim nature might make sense. But as the mayor suggests, I think the resolution should be revised to read that we will revisit any problems arising out of the project with respect to either the structure or the faces of the building at a later date, once we understand what they are, if any. Maybe there's none.
I think that's fair, counsel. When you look at it, and with all respect to Mr. Polistrini, his building is an end building, and if you go and you've seen that canopy, it is bolted into the end of his building. That is not the case for the rest of the people along there, except the other end. So there will be a little more of a risk in his building because it is bolted into the side of it versus sitting on the lip on the front. So I understand the concern. I think you're well within your rights to look at that agreement, to come back at a later date, and amend the agreement accordingly. We will work with Mr. Polistrini with whatever happens going forward, and try to come to some kind of an agreement on what is and is not acceptable. As, you know, it's been said, if it's not acceptable, things certainly have a claim brought against the city. I wish that'd be the only one this year it's been brought, but it would not be.
On this project.
But it's fair. And I think that's all we're looking for, is what's fair. So I think if that's acceptable, Mr. Polistrini is attorney, I would ask you to go ahead and make the amendment. We will go in this nervous together because we don't know what's going to come off of this. But it is bolted in, it is a different case for him versus the others that have it just on the lip, sitting there. So I understand the nervousness and the worry. We're not sure either what that's going to look like. And so, with all fairness, I agree with the amount to put the metal over it, if that's all that's needed. But anything above and beyond, we will have to take a look at that, as we have with other projects along the corridor and other businesses that we've had to deal with, whether it be sidewalks, or planters in the front, or whatever was hit or possibly damaged. So again, that's my point of, I think it's fair if you were willing to do that. Otherwise, we can talk about this for a whole lot longer, but I don't know that we're going to get much further than where we are now.
And I think, really, this resolution just approves what we're paying Modern Builders.
Correct.
I don't think we're trying to take away the claim that could be made back for other things that would happen. I mean, it really is just, it's what they, we're holding them accountable to do next week.
But the question, but the question is then, I mean, do we need a change, I mean, you know, is, do we need a change to the resolution as a commitment, you know, about a commitment to revisit?
Revisit. I'd like a commitment to revisit in the resolution. I'm also kind of okay with an understanding, but I'd prefer it embodied in the resolution, a simple commitment to revisit any potential structural issues or aesthetic issues arising out of the removal. Will be revisited at a later date, with no commitment for you to pay it, and no commitment that you won't pay it.
Well, I think the phrase for additional repairs is unfortunate, because it's not really repairs necessarily, it's protection, sealing, whatever you want to put it.
We kind of scrambled, I did a quick language for Carla to stick in there. I mean, it was intended to be that, in fact, I had some very specific language about, to basically cover with sheet metal, at the color, you know, a standard color. And so, that was what was intended by the $3,000. It certainly wasn't to be any other, any damages, any and all damages. And I think we have a pretty clear understanding tonight with our discussion, that we're not really trying to foreclose any claims that are going to happen.
Carla, do we have a motion on the floor, or no?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
Rafi moved, and Bergen seconded.
Well, then I'll move to amend this resolution to keep all the wording that is there, and to add on language that says, and a, we're approving a commitment to revisit significant structure, well, structural repairs, or structural issues and significant aesthetic issues after removal of the canopy.
That's good. Acceptable to us, yep.
Thank you.
You need a second. I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to amend the resolution to revisit the issue after the removal of the canopy.
The only problem that I have with that is, we're only approving $18,260 for the project. What happens when Modern Builders takes the canopy off, and there are some things, structural issues that need to be repaired immediately, we need to have authority for them to go beyond the $18,260 to repair those structural issues immediately.
My understanding is the $3,000 is still in there.
We just took that out.
No, no, no.
It's still there.
That's still there.
Depending on the structural issue, Modern Builders may or may not be the company that would be needed to do it. That's why we may not want to add that into their contract. It may be someone else that has the expertise to do it, and they may choose not to, as others did on this project, so...
My motion would be to leave all that language, Rod, and just to add the commitment.
Okay.
So my question would be, is this a resolution basically about what we are going to do with Modern Builders? And if so, then it is proposal, might be a separate resolution. I just kind of wonder if that would be a cleaner way to do that.
Here's the way I wrote my notes, so if you want to...
Please.
Just add at the end, instead of the period at the end of result, that paragraph, just to say, "and approving a commitment to review and reconsider structural and major aesthetic issues after removal of the canopy." I was trying to be very general, is that all right? Okay.
Agreed, Matt? I think that's what we have on the floor for a motion.
I think that's essentially what you said, but I might have missed a few words, but...
Yeah, I think, I think Mike's just asking whether it should be two separate resolutions or all in one. Whether one has to do with Modern Builders, and should be left that way, or whether we should separate it out. I'm thinking it doesn't matter, but you tell us.
I don't think it does, because I think my, our agreement with, with Modern Builders is to do what they agreed to in their, in their proposal, with the added thing of the sheet metal going over the strip, which is that $3,000.
So then, the understanding is that this...
We would review the structural and major aesthetic issues and decide if there's a claim made before this...
And it's okay to be part and parcel of the same resolution?
I think so. I mean, it, it just says what you intend to do, right.
So do you have something in writing from them about the sheet metal $3,000 part? Because that wasn't on their original...
Actually, I talked to, I talked to Marty when he was in Vegas. Or no, San Diego. He's at a conference in San Diego, and he said, I kind of read him what we intended for him to do, and that's to put sheet metal, colored sheet metal over the strip. And he says, we can do that for the $3,000, is the way he put it. I don't have any more than that. That's why I made it fairly general.
If it would please, counsel, maybe add the words "as a result of the removal of the canopy"?
Sure. Thanks, Carla. Yep.
Instead of "after"...
Now, do we need a vote on the amendment before we vote on the resolution?
Yes.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Everybody's happy with it, I'm happy with it.
You still are having second thoughts, or no?
Oh, you know, I'm one of these guys who likes the wordsmith things, so. I will, I'll make my right to wordsmith. I'm happy with it.
Good for you.
Roll call vote. Roll call vote on the amendment, please.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Share.
Yes.
Do we need to...
That's the amendment.
The resolution is amended.
Yep.
Make sure there's no additional conversations.
Okay. Now, we'll vote on the resolution as amended. Roll call vote, please.
Share.
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. All's approved, 5 to 0, 2 absent. Item number 3, approving Resolution 1848, a resolution awarding the downtown alley reconstruction project. I'd entertain a motion. I'm sorry?
Yep. Item 2.
Citywide asphalt patching, sir.
Yeah. Grabbed an extra page when I turned.
I will move Resolution 1847, a resolution awarding contract for the citywide asphalt patching, spring 2018, project to Blacktop Services Company of Humboldt, Iowa, for the bid amount of $28,928.37, and authorizing the city attorney to review and approve the performance and payment bonds.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Motion carried, 5 0, 2 absent. Now, on to resolution, for item number 3, resolution approving, awarding the downtown alley reconstruction project.
I'll move approval of Resolution 1848, a resolution awarding the downtown alley reconstruction project to Barry Smith Grading and Excavating of Waverly, Iowa, for the bid amount of $29,523, and authorizing the city attorney to review and approve the performance and payment bonds.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I do, Your Honor. The notes on here said this is for the 200, the alley and the 200 block on the south side of West Bremer Avenue. Why does this not include the 100 block and the 300 block? Why is this only the 200 block?
That's the alley I was told to do.
Okay. Did we make that decision as a council, that we were only going to do one block?
It was done a year ago, and the budget at hand, this is the second half of that budget from a year prior for the prior council, and this was the other alley that was determined to be the worst of those three. And then next year, we will hit two more, as we continue on. We only have funding for two alleys. One was the first one, was behind East Bremer Niner that way, so we went across the bridge and the other side of the street. We know those are pretty tough alleys as well. This was the first one. I think it was requested by a citizen that we address it initially, which is how it came into the budget to start with. We thought it was a very good idea, so we allocated for two alleys, that being the initial reason it was put in. You look to your left, you'll see that citizen. And that's how it all started, in all fairness.
Initially, he was a citizen.
Correct.
Citizen request. But there are plans to do the other two blocks worth of alleys, and some of the other alleys. Okay, good.
Funding for two alleys, that was...
Funding for two alleys, but undetermined what alleys.
Correct.
Okay.
But even at the time, like you said, I think you looked at them, or we decided that this was one that was probably in the worst shape.
I want to point out, not only to this council, but to the people who are listening, that my business is also on that alley, and I had absolutely nothing to do with the selection of this. As a matter of fact, I am going to recuse myself from this vote, so that there's absolutely no appearance that I had any influence in what's happening here at all.
It's not a problem at all. But again, that's what we're looking at, is at the time, when it was first recommended, we knew Bremer Avenue project was coming, we're going to have to be using back entrances as well, so we did try to look at downtown and both sides of the river, and we will do the same thing next year, we're trying to ascertain which of the two alleys need to be done and continue with this project. Because I do think it is a secondary entrance that should be utilized more than it has been, because it's been such kind of a rough shape, and it will help with deliveries and snow removal and things like that. So we will continue on with this, but yes, it was nothing to do with you, per se, or the gentleman now that are mayor at the time, it was requests. They deemed it a good project to do, and so inserted funding to accomplish it. And that was the prior council, so I've danced around that as best I can dance, and that's what I have. So please continue, sir.
The mayor has no comment.
Thank you for that.
Well, I just think that Councilman Drankow's candor is refreshing.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Rafi?
Yes.
Share?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 4 to 0. One reclusive himself abstained, and 2 absent. Item number 4, Resolution 1849, a resolution awarding bid, awarding bid to fill in the crypt at the Harlington Cemetery. Entertain a motion?
I'll approve a motion for resolution, or I'll move the Resolution 1849, resolution awarding the bid to fill in the crypt at Harlington Cemetery to PCW of Waverly, Iowa, for the bid amount of $17,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion?
I just want to comment on the photographs that accompanied this. I've always wanted to see inside there, and they were not very informative. I'm sort of sad it's getting filled up. I know, I should...
You should hurry before it gets full of sand, or is it sand or flowable concrete? What are we doing?
It's flowable concrete.
You should really hurry then.
But that crypt has had mythologic, I mean, I grew up here, so we always speculated what was in there.
It's had dead people in it.
I know.
So in other words, it is...
We can arrange a tour.
And the door keeps slamming, and I don't know why.
Tab, there was a comment in there that there would be a fence that's associated with this. Where would that fence be? Is it on the top of the crypt, on the, on the top of that ledge?
Correct.
So people can't just fall off in the middle of the night, if they're out in the cemetery doing something they're not supposed to be doing.
In the middle of the day, yes.
Or during the day.
I got to say, this really breaks my heart to see this filled. I'm of the impression there's only two crypts like this in the state of Iowa, and basically by filling it, we're reducing that number to one. We're basically saying this is, if we fill it, it's a one-way trip, there's no way to ever recover this.
Crypt is always kind of a one-way trip, really.
Fair enough.
How much does it cost to repair it?
We've tried to find contractors that even look at it to get a cost, and we can't find anybody.
When it was initially discussed, we had asked a bit of about $50,000, just to try and get some kind of a ballpark on it, and we really couldn't find anyone that could confirm that or deny it, because it is a rare item that you really don't see a lot of interest in coming in and preserving. I know it's unique, and we understand that. But I know it's also a pretty good danger right now with the top starting to collapse in. And so it was kind of either we try to repair it, which we had little luck finding someone to do, or we have to address it and fill it and make it safe and secure for the public.
I know. We'll get over it. But it's sad.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero.
Cry it out, Ira.
I wish we had better choices.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This has to be one of the saddest votes we've taken in here.
Probably is.
It just sounds pretty glum, the way you guys are voting.
And I feel bad now.
I feel bad, too. I wish we had other options.
Moving on to item number five, Resolution Awarding 1850, awarding sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation 2018 project. Entertain a motion?
I will happily move approval of Resolution 1850, a resolution awarding the sanitary sewer manhole rehabilitation 2018 project to Josh's Construction of Dubuque, Iowa, for the bid amount of $21,531.70.
I'll offer a cheerful second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Raffi.
Looks like Mike wants to say something.
I just might ask Ann if the photograph is, if my photograph is more informative.
Your photograph is much better.
And Tab's.
I like the names of the companies that do this work. Viziu, Viziu Sewer.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, two absent. Item number six. Resolution 1851, approving the quote and contract for the West Water Tower riser repair work. Entertain a motion?
I will move approval of Resolution 18-51, resolution approving the quote and contract for the West Water, West Water Tower riser repair work to Central Tank Coatings Incorporated of Elgin, Iowa, for the quoted amount of $12,200.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion?
Just where this fits in the budget. Is this somehow one of these unexpected expenses that we have wiggle rooms set aside for? Or is this something that was somehow previously accounted for?
So on the agenda memo, if you go down to the bottom, it's 1819 financing. It was incorporated into the budget. And when we did that, we actually had the higher quote, but we were able to obtain another quote for the work that came in at a better price.
Excellent.
Questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, two absent. Resolution number seven, 1852, a resolution approving construction plans and guarantees for the Omni Lot 40 development.
I'll move Resolution 1852, resolution approving construction plans and guarantees for the Omni Lot 40 development.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion?
I have a question of why we're being asked to approve this now when it's already under construction.
This is for construction of the public sanitary sewer that needs to be installed to service this. And upon completion, it will be dedicated to the city for our ownership and maintenance.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero, two absent. Item number eight, Resolution 1853, approving preliminary assessment unit price values for the 2018 sidewalk maintenance and inspection program. Entertain a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 18-53, resolution approving preliminary assessment unit price values for the 2018 sidewalk maintenance and inspection program.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion?
Have these values changed from last year?
We're using the same values as last year. The bids came in comfortably below, so we feel we do not need to factor any inflation into the estimate.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero. Two absent. Item number nine. Resolution 1854, approving the granting of an easement to Mid-American Energy on city-owned property for a new gas regulator station. Entertain a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 1854, a resolution approving the granting of an easement to Mid-American Energy on city-owned property for a new gas regulator station for the sum of $1.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion?
I just have a question. Is it normal not to charge anything for this?
It facilitates our, the supply of gas to our customers and to our residents. And so we usually find a space for them to use. Sometimes it's right-ofways, and sometimes it's property that the city owns. And I think it was, it's a good location for this particular device that will help the distribution of gas.
Right. They have an existing regular regulator station in front of First Insurance Services, right next to an electrical transformer. And so they're going to be relocating it to this location behind Quick Star on the east side.
So is it, is it a box-looking thing? I don't know.
Nope. You'll see, just, they're kind of painted a dark green. They have just some pipes that come up and then go back down into the ground. And they regulate the gas pressure, I guess, so.
Have there been conversations with the neighbors to the east? Have they been consulted at all?
They're quite a ways to the east. This is a pretty isolated area.
But this is right at the property line, correct?
Yeah. As far as, if you want to see what they look like, like I said, there's one on Third Street, right in front of First Insurance Services. They just installed one over at the corner of 16th Street and West Bremer Avenue, right on LSIs corner. There's another one over there, so. South Riverside Park. Yeah, they're scattered around the community. They just, as part of their upgrades, gas main improvements that they're doing in Waverly, they wanted to get this one relocated.
So is this going to be behind the Quick Star, just to the east of where their entrance is? Like, it was hard to tell from them.
East and south. This is almost across from where the bike trail entrances.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, where across from the.
I mean, considerably east from there. They have the driveway into Quick Star, and it's east of there.
It's east of there, okay.
Actually, where some old warehouses were that belonged to the lumberyard for the bank presently is.
I think the homes are considerably higher, if that's what you're thinking, Brian.
Well, there's a home on that lot just the east, although that lot, I believe the house is kind of in the northeast corner on that lot. Is there a sidewalk between this regulator and the street?
There's no sidewalk there.
Is there any concern about its proximity to the road there? I mean, I'd hate for someone to hit it.
No, we've, this actually gets it off the right-ofway. So the city has a parcel of ground that we own. As the mayor was indicating, there was some storage buildings there that were torn down in 98, so. And the city continues to own it. You know, we've looked at using it for additional rail trail parking if needed. That need has never really arisen. So again, it's a good location.
Let the record show, Councilman Kangas arrived at 8:33, okay? Any other questions, comments? On item number nine, roll call vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Motion passed. Six to zero. One absent. Item number 10, Resolution 1855, a resolution reapproving the sale of a parcel of land, parcel AA, in the right-of-way Greenway adjacent to Mark's Auto Repair to MMC Properties LLC to facilitate redevelopment.
I will move approval of Resolution 1855, a resolution reapproving the sale of a parcel of land, parcel AA, in the right-of-way Greenway adjacent to Mark's Repair to MMC Properties LLC, for $500 to facilitate redevelopment pursuant to a revised development agreement.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion?
Could staff just do a brief summary of this?
So what we did was, before, they were talking about sharing the driveway with the childcare center. And that was not turning out to be very practical for both users. So there, we're authorizing that MMC, the properties can actually create a different driveway, have a separate driveway.
Right next to each other?
It'll be a little ways away. But it will be, I can't remember how they, it's going to be a little farther towards the intersection. But it's still a location that will work. And those driveways aren't going to be as busy, and it's now off a main arterial. So they should be fine, even though they're a little closer than what we would do off an arterial.
When I looked back at the drawings, or the photos from previously when we discussed this, and is it one big parking lot on the whole side that adjoins those two buildings? Or do they each have their separate parking lot with separate driveways?
They're separate.
Okay.
I mean, you're talking about the current property.
The current property, which will probably be different.
It's all one big property.
And then there's the childcare behind it.
The childcare is a separate, but the rest of that parking lot is all connected along Fourth Street.
And why does this require, why would that require reapproval?
Because they wanted to change the development agreement to allow for a separate driveway rather than using the existing driveway.
Okay. So we're amending, we're not amending the previous one, we're doing a whole new one?
We're just approving a new development agreement.
Then against the first one?
You approved it, he didn't sign it.
Okay.
Because he didn't want to agree to that one. And so we did it so that, the way he wanted it. And I still think it's, we still think it works for that situation.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Kangas.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero, one absent. Resolution 1856, authorizing the issuance of $11 million in general obligation bonds series 2018A and levying a tax for the payment thereof. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion?
And just for the public's sake, does anybody, Miss Staff, maybe want to summarize this?
Absolutely. Once you had the hearings to allow for the bonds to be issued, this now gives you the authority to tax for them in the next year. Otherwise, without this hearing before April 1st, you would not be able to make a payment in the next year that you budgeted. You'd have to wait for the following year. So this allows us to get a jump and make a payment quickly in December and June of the next year that we actually budgeted for. So it's called a pre-levy hearing for your taxes to allow you to do that.
Any other questions, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero, one absent. Item number 12, first reading of ordinance 1034, an ordinance amending chapter 102 of City Code, providing for amendments to the current flood plane management section and setting a public hearing.
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1034, an ordinance amending chapter 102 of the City Code, providing for amendments to the current flood plan management section, and setting April 2nd, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion?
I just had a question about what section of town this now covers, given the changes in the flood plain?
Well, it covers the entire community. It's just whether it's relevant to areas where.
I guess that's what I mean, is where is it relevant?
Yeah, within the flood plain.
Under-year flood.
Areas. It's really one of those that they periodically want us to update our ordinances to comply with the most recent one that DNR recommends. And so the section that I used, because it was hard for me to know which ones were changed, is the one that has the colored.
Right. Yeah, that was helpful.
Yeah.
And I would just add that planning and zoning went over this really carefully and had a unanimous vote on it.
When's the last time this was updated? About how many years?
Twenty, I think, or something.
Twenty years?
I think so.
It's about time, then.
They haven't changed it much, but they've done a lot recently to change some of these different regulations.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero, one absent. Item 13, discussion on the possible purchase of lavalier microphones for the council chambers. Tab, is that your department or Carla?
We share.
I know we share, so.
The mayor requested that I look into some lavalier microphones for this council so that the sound becomes better, so we don't have to push our microphones back and forth and that sort of thing. It would involve you folks would be wearing a microphone on your lapel and have a probably little box on the side or on your desk. We looked at it and with our, our company that does that kind of stuff, that initially put all the sound and speakers and that sort of thing in the building, and came back with a price of $11,450. And this is a discussion of whether you want to do that. We have $20,000 budget to upgrade the amps and the speakers in both this room and the Civic Center. And if you chose to do a lavalier system, I would recommend that we do it at the same time as we do the rest of that sound business. But also look at a lavalier system in the Civic Center so that we could have a lapel mic for a speaker in there. Since we're doing it here, might as well do it in there.
So that's.
And I don't have an extra cost on that.
Oh, so that's not included in this estimate?
It is not.
Do you usually just get estimates from one company for this sort of thing?
We've used this company before. Like I said, they're the ones that did the system before. And we've just always used them. We could potentially look at another.
I mean, I don't know. I don't know much. It seems expensive to me. I'll just say, I mean, have we gotten a lot of complaints about, I mean, I know we get some, but do we get a lot of complaints about people not being able to hear us? Okay.
Carla's nodding.
We get a lot of complaints about people who don't lean forward into the microphones to talk. So I think that there's a solution that involves us just being conscientious about microphone usage. That's probably a little less expensive.
I mean, it looks like they're, I mean, divide, just quick math, about $1,000 each, roughly.
It was $650 each, but the cost of the antennas to pick up the microphones was another $2,000, $3,000.
Maybe it's just me, but, and, you know, maybe this isn't even the place to talk about it. But I have more problems with the screen, you know? It's probably my eyes or something. But these small screens, I think, are increasingly difficult to see.
Well, my concern with this is, I mean, there have been some comments that those microphones might pick up a lot of ambient noise, paper shuffling, you know, whatever. Did you discuss anything at all with them about that?
I have not.
Because I know when I've used a lavalier mic, it's usually when I'm doing a presentation. So you're not sitting up here moving papers around and getting books and that kind of thing. We may end up spending that, a lot of money on a system that people find is just as annoying as the system we currently have.
We have had comments about presenters here, too, where they don't. That's how come we pointed the two microphones over there, just to see if that would help out. It's unclear if it's helped out yet.
And that really would not necessarily be fixed with a lavalier system, because they would have to clip on mics before they spoke, which I'm not sure is really a practical solution. But it would be helpful. I mean, I suppose after a while, you know, I do kind of train myself that before I start speaking, I pull my bike up and lean forward. So, you know, maybe after three or four years, I'll actually remember to do it every time I speak. But, you know, a lavalier system would be nice. We wouldn't have to think about those things. But yeah, it is expensive. I don't really have a strong preference one way or the other, frankly.
Well, I know early on Carla made the comment that she was getting calls. I've gotten calls from various people. And there's various reasons that I did not want that mic sticking up in front of me. And I'm very comfortable with the lavalier, so.
I can say when I was out with my shoulder being fixed, I watched the council meeting on cable TV. And there were a couple of people that I wished would have been sitting on the microphone talking. And even the presenter, I texted Tab and asked him to have them pick the microphone up, because it's really hard to hear on TV. Now, when I watched it the next day on YouTube, fine. But it's just on that, during that cable casting.
I don't feel strongly either way, either, whatever. I mean, I just, you know, whatever you think is best. But I would echo whoever said before that that is not a solution for somebody coming up to make comments, because it's too awkward. It's awkward now, because you have, they have to hold up their, you know, hold up the microphone there. But.
Bremer Avenue. We have, we have three signals right there in a row. We have a signal at first, second, and third, and I'm not convinced that we need a signal at second. I believe that the signal was more important when Saint Mary's Catholic Church was down that road, and mass would let out, and everyone would try to be turned left on Bremer Avenue. But I'm not convinced that we need three signals. I have to say, because I live on Third Street, the number of times that I stop at all three lights, because I stopped to turn left, I get stopped at second, and I get stopped at first, I just question the need for that middle signal. So at some point, I'd like that to be a part of our, one of our study sessions to discuss.
Okay. Any other council comments?
Well, I'd piggyback off of Brian's. I think just a look at all of our lights in town in general, which would be a good idea to take into consideration, especially as we're starting to build the Cedar Parkway. That intersection is going to need to be considered in terms of, instead of a flashing yellow, I think there's going to need to be a solid green there for turning left. But then also at the turn-in by McDonald's going south, could be a left turn arrow there. I noticed coming in today, I don't know how long it's been, but I noticed that there was a left turn arrow here at First Street East. When did that?
Today.
Today.
Just popped up today, okay. Is that having to do with the construction coming up?
It's training us for the construction that starts next week.
Okay.
We have a week to get used to it.
Not having been here, but just pulling in tonight, I was like, whoa, I got a left arrow. Different.
I noticed this.
Everybody goes different times.
Okay. So, again, I think it's a good concept to reevaluate that, especially as we're adding a, adding another road that's going to perhaps alter traffic patterns in town, to consider that. I know people talk to me about over at Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street, do we need to have both lights, or can one of those be controlled for just during the school day, Fifteenth there with the library, and have the other one be a regular light? So, just some discussion.
Not to pile on to your discussion, but I think also Bremer Avenue and Fourth Street, I think, needs some discussion. There are some issues with the timing of the lights there, particularly as you're heading south on Fourth Street, and this also might be an appropriate time, at that time, if we are going to have this discussion, to talk about pedestrian crossings, which is a, a issue that I think we really need to have some discussion about.
Very good. Good comments. Any other?
I have just a, just a quick comment. I, I think maybe Mike Cherry knows about it, maybe not. Last time I came into Waverly on Three from the east at night, I discovered that our rather handsome "Welcome to Waverly" sign doesn't totally light up. I think we need to have somebody take a look at that probably after dark. I can read most of it.
I think that at one time, that was kind of under the chambers umbrella. I'm not sure whether they are or not anymore.
I think it's Tab's right now. Seriously, I think it's these reservists.
Nobody else claims that it's Tab.
Tab a flashlight? No. I do think it's under our guise, the areas out there, so.
All right, very good. Anything else for the good of the cause? The mayor has no comments this evening, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
Oh. Yes, that's right. Sorry, that was from added Friday.
Right, no, I understand that, but I thought we had to, to adjourn out of this in order to go into.
No, basically, we enter executive session and note that there won't be any additional business afterwards. I would move to enter into executive session for the purpose to discuss purchase or sale of particular real estate only where a premature disclosure could reasonably be expected to increase the price. The governmental body would have to pay for that property, or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property.
This is a second.
Second.
Motion made seconded to enter into executive session as hereby.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Kengas?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergin?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero, one absent. We are trying to, let's take a.